You can live out there, it's like, I suppose it's a little like what you said.
Guys all ready? Ready to go? We'll bring this meeting order. This is the Woodland Park Planning Commission regular meeting agenda, 7:00 PM, June 8, 2017. The order and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we'll begin with John Devote.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Ellen Carruth.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Vicki Good.
Here.
Jerry Penlon.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
Charles Schrader.
Here.
And for the record, Steve Standard is away tonight.
If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance place.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of May 11th, everybody had a chance to take a peek at those. Anybody have any problem, motion inside, or everybody say yes, want to? Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item four, public hearings. This is case 0N17011, Aspandale rezone. Request for the city's review and approval of a rezoning of the 10-acre parcel of land known as Aspandale property from suburban residential SR district to urban residential UR district for the purpose of increasing density from 10 to 20 single-family resident units located in the portion of the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter of section 14, T-12S, R-69W of the 6th prime meridian, City of Woodland Park, Colorado. The vacant land is generally situated south and west of Stone Ridge Village, north and east of Northwood subdivision. The rezoning requested is made by the property owner, Spruce Fridge Properties LLC, the general manager and applicant. And this is a quasi judicial hearing meeting. I'm gonna go over a little bit of what our order's gonna be. Did we have brochures back there to show the order?
No, sir, I have it on a slide.
Okay, but first of all, disclosure of ex parte communication. Anybody have a conflict of interest, talk to the applicant, anything like that. We'll first have the staff's presentation. The staff will get up, talk about this. Then the applicant will be able to get up and give their presentation. Then the planning commission will ask questions of the staff and the applicant. Then we'll go into an open public hearing. And at the open public hearing, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, and we'll bring that up here, and if you forgot to put it on it, don't worry, we'll still call in. And then we will go through that one at a time. We'll then close public comment, and there'll be any rebuttal from the applicant if they have any commissioners ask any final questions, and then we'll begin deliberation and go from there, okay? So what we'll first start out with?
Thank you. We'll do it from my seat since we have our new... First of all, welcome to our citizens who are here this evening. And just a quick review of the meetings. We did hold a... The applicant and I, staff, were invited to a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday evening. Laura Pellegrino also attended, it was a very good discussion. Tonight is the planning commission hearing, and following this hearing, this case will proceed to the city council, who is the ultimate authority that will make the decision whether to grant the upzone from suburban residential to urban residential. And the council does this via an ordinance. Therefore, the first reading of that ordinance, and it's simply a reading and setting the public hearing, will occur on July 6th, with the final public hearing set for July 20th. Our chairman has already explained the proceedings for this evening, so you will have the opportunity to make public comment after the staff's presentation, the applicant's presentation, and questions. So we'll begin with a USGS map. This general location of the Aspandale 10 acres is shown by the yellow tract, and it's about a mile from the center of downtown Woodland Park. And it is situated adjacent to Northwoods. And I pulled this map off the assessor's database, and so I'm not sure exactly what year this is, but USGS maps have not been updated in a long time. And you can see that surrounding this area is a shaded parcel, and this was all owned by the Forest Service at one time. And I'm just drawing your attention to that because I am going to reference the Spielman tract, and that's what that Forest Service block is referred to. And you can see the proximity of this 10 acres to our major highway corridors, Highway 67, Kelly's Road. And what is rather interesting is that this does line up exactly with Kelly's Road. And in the annexation of this property in 1981, there was a requirement that a portion of the property be dedicated to a Kelly's Road road right-of-way. Of course, that never occurred because of the development of Stone Ridge and the way things occurred around, the development occurred around this tract. But it's just an interesting factoid that at the time it was annexed in 1981, there was an expectation that Kelly's Road was going to extend west on this tract. So now I'd like to show you an aerial, a bird's eye view of the area in proximity with the Northwood subdivision, which contains about 200 lots and developed homes in it right now. And then the Spielman tract, the old Spielman tract, became Stone Ridge Village. And that is a 200-acre development that was annexed into the city in the early 2000s and has just begun to develop with its first filings to the north and the east of the subject property. Right now, there are 71 lots that are platted in the Stone Ridge Village. There will be eventually about 360 units on that 200 acres of the Stone Ridge Village. There's also some commercial tracts along the highway, Highway 67, that are planned in this area. Wanted to show you also its proximity, of course, to the Meadowwood Sports Complex, the fire station, the Evergreen Heights, Collector Street to the south. And there are places of worship, as well as another park in this area, the Adventure Park. So this aerial gives you a good idea of the development pattern that has occurred over the last 30 years in this area. Now a zoom in on the aerial, which shows you the 10 acres, and you can see the topography a little bit and the vegetation of this 10-acre tract. But first, I'd like to point out the Northwood subdivision to the west and to the south. This is Michael Lane that they front off of. So as folks come to the podium and begin to speak or comment, I want you to make sure that when you catch their addresses, those folks on Michael Lane are in this part of the neighborhood. And then to the north, we have the Stone Ridge Village, this is Snowshoe, and then Stone Ridge Village Drive. And then there's a U-shaped loop of Tarmigan Drive. And so these homes and lots that are adjacent to the 10-acre tract are along Tarmigan Drive. I'd also like to point out, at the end of Michael Lane, there is a tract known as Lot, Outlot A. This was deeded to the city 30 years ago or so. Lost my pointer, there it is. And Outlot A was always intended to provide access to this tract from the early 80s. And then there is another access point, it's called Cobalt Point, and this was also deeded to the city, although it's unimproved, has not been improved with the roadway that is just off of Tarmigan. So when Stone Ridge Village was developed, it was a foresight of the developer to allow for access to this parcel on the east side, as well as the west, the northwest corner from Northwoods. And the applicant will be able to discuss his role in the development of Stone Ridge Village because there were some drainage improvements and extension of stubouts in Cobalt to be able to accommodate future development of the Aspandale tract. So again, the tract itself, you can see that there's some vegetation in the northwest corner of pines, and then it goes into a very lovely Aspen glade area, then quite a bit of open natural grass field area, and there's a little bit more of the ponderosa pine forest over here. There is, I'm going to show you a photo of the drainage that comes in between these two homes in Northwoods, and this drains this western side of the Northwood subdivision and over from Meadowwood Park, Sports Complex. It's channelized in this area, and then when it gets about here, it kind of sheet flows across the property, and then it gathers again, kind of, the terrain forces it into another drainage swale and a drainage easement that traverses through Stone Ridge. And just out of the view here is a detention pond that was sized to be able to handle this drainage. Then on the eastern side, first I want to share that there's a ridge, a slight ridge, and we'll see that in the topography map, traverses through the middle here, although most of the terrain is very gradual. But there is another drainage system that comes down the east side of Northwoods. It goes into a storm drain, and it is piped, that the developer of Stone Ridge had put in, and it's piped all the way underground over to this detention pond. And those drainage facilities are all designed, detention pond is designed to contain the 100-year storm, the five-year storm, plus a portion of the two-year storm. So there are no regulated floodplains associated with this. Eventually, to the north, there's a Lloyd Gulch area that is a regulated floodplain, but this all drains pretty well in its natural environment, and the built environment as well. So now on to the zoning map. This is key. Here is our, the subject property, and you can see Cobalt Drive is labeled out of the Stone Ridge subdivision. It's colored in this lilac color as a planned unit development. Planned unit developments are allowed to have up to two dwelling units per gross acre. As I mentioned, this 200 acres is planned to have at least 360 units associated with it, so it's 40 units below what its maximum build-out could be. And then the Northwood subdivision is zoned suburban residential, and I'll go through the history of that later in my presentation, but it's important to note here that in 1980, when this was annexed, or '81, and then developed in the early 80s, it was based on an R1 zoning. And it was in 1997 that the city revamped their entire zoning code and map and established these new classifications. So suburban residential was applied to Northwoods primarily because it has 15, it was based on 15,000 square foot lots when it was developed in the early 80s. So its density is approximately three units per gross acre with a 15,000 square foot lot. Further to the west, you can see Meadowwood Park, this is zoned public, semi-public. And then we have another PUD, which is the Evergreen Heights PUD. That too was approved in the early 80s and is substantially built out. Then more suburban residential. And then there is a relatively new development, this is called Stewart Place, where Karen Lane is, and you'll see that it is zoned urban residential. So in the early 2000s, this used to be the old KOA campground, and the Stewarts decided to get out of the campground business and develop their property, and they requested urban residential at that time in order to allow for two dwelling units per acre on this lovely subdivision that built out fairly quickly before the recession. And so Stewart Place is a very good example of what the applicant is proposing to do with the 10 acres in Aspandale. And then just to complete the zoning in this general neighborhood, more public, semi-public land, which is the fire station and the adventure, Red Mountain Adventure Park, there's a tract of land that is zoned multifamily, these are the Meadow Apartment Complex, and that was built also in the 80s. And then there was a little tiny PUD on Calico Court, a little, I think it's 10 units, 10-unit subdivision. And then we have the campground, which is zoned community commercial, the hot pink up on Highway 67 with the other campground, the IREA building and the church, those are also community commercial. So this gives you a good representation of how important zoning is to the development patterns of our community as we begin to build out and grow. Now some photos of the property. So I'm standing near the ditch that comes out of Northwoods, which is noted by this blue arrow, and looking east on the northern portion of this parcel, so you can see a little bit of the ridge with Rampart Range in the far distance, you can see the Aspen Grove that's there, as well as the ponderosa pines in the foreground. And then these two photos were taken looking toward the west of the swale that comes through Northwoods, and then as I mentioned, the stormwater somewhat fans out into this area and then collects into a swale at Stone Ridge and into the detention pond. So very grassy, fairly level area. Walking along the northern property boundary of Aspandale, you can see the Stone Ridge homes that are in proximity of this property and the Aspens, mixed kind of forest area. And then coming more to the east side of the property, looking toward the southwest and towards Northwoods, here's Gold Hill. Up here, you can see the, barely see the antennas from this tract. But this is the southern portion of the 10 acres, that is mostly that open grass area. And then I turned around and took a photo, shooting toward the northwest and showing the Aspen glade, the small ridge traverses through this area. So very gently sloping. This is a photo of Outlot A, looking east off the end of Michael Lane. This Michael Lane was platted to be able to enter into that old Spielman tract, that's not being proposed for an access at this time, but Outlot A is owned by the city intended to be used as an access point. And then here is the intersection of Cobalt Point and Tarmigan Drive. You can see that it is unimproved, but it is prepared for a new road to enter into the 10 acres from the east and from Stone Ridge Drive. So moving on, the main difference between the suburban residential, or SR zone, and the urban residential, or UR zone, is the density. So suburban residential allows up to one dwelling unit per gross acre, but the lot sizes can vary, as larger than an acre or down to 1,500 square feet. That's the minimum lot size with a suburban residential. In urban residential, they're allowed to have a density of two units, dwelling units, per gross acre with a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. All the other dimensional standards in these two single-family residential zones are the same. So the height is limited at 30 setbacks for each home, would be 25 feet on the front and rear, eight feet on the sides as a minimum. Frontage along the street is required to be 40 feet at a minimum. Two parking spaces off-street and on-site are required for each unit. And then when a lot is developed, the house cannot encompass the entire lot, at least 40 percent or more of that lot needs to remain as, and I'm gonna clarify, it's private open space, this is not a public open space, this is private open space on the lot. So here's the topography survey that you received in your packet, and this shows the Northwoods lots, which were basically about 15,000 to 16,000 square foot lots in this neighborhood. And then the topos on this map show the higher portion of the lot is right here in the south center, and then it gradually slopes, about a 6% slope, down to this corner over 660 feet, it's about a 23-foot drop, which is about a 6% slope. So it's a very gradual, very buildable site with respect to terrain. And therefore, the capacity for this property to handle two dwelling units per gross acre is very reasonable based on its terrain. So when we receive a zoning request, we ask ourselves a number of questions. The staff does a technical review to ensure that this request is reasonable and is something that will grow our community in an orderly fashion that is complementary to the surrounding uses. So we're still talking about single-family development, and I'm going to review our analysis, and the first thing we look at is the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2010, and it is full of all kinds of interesting descriptions of our community in terms of land use, housing, character, transportation, utilities, a community well-being, the historic preservation. So many, many topics are covered in this comprehensive plan, and there's something for everyone. So you can pretty much find goals and objectives that could either support a project, or also you can find some things that would perhaps oppose a project. It is an aspirational document, it is not a regulatory document, but it is our guidance for the future growth of what we want to be in Woodland Park as we do build out and we grow up. So we go to the comprehensive plan, and the first thing we ask is, is it consistent with the map that we do in conjunction with the comprehensive plan? And the map shows this property as residential, the surrounding properties are residential, so yes, it is consistent with the comp plan map. And then we ask, is it consistent with comp plan goals and objectives? So I just picked out a few of the many goals and objectives that are in the comp plan, and the first one deals with a land use and growth goal to provide opportunities for growth and development while preserving community and environmental quality. So a very broad kind of goal that could be interpreted in a lot of ways. But with the urban residential zone on this 10 acres, it most definitely reduces sprawl and provides for a more efficient use of the infrastructure. So the utility lines, the roads that would be installed to be able to serve this property, if you only have 10 units as opposed to 20 units on the same road, you're getting less benefit from those 10 units than you would from 20 units being on that same infrastructure. So it's a, it's better, it's smarter planning, it's better use of the infrastructure. And then there's also an opportunity to preserve open space with smaller lots that are compatible to the lot sizes that are around this 10 acres. Most of the lot sizes are either around 15,000 to 16,000 square feet. The next goal deals with housing, to be able to provide a balanced and diverse supply of housing in the community that's well-designed and accessible to all residents or citizens. And by having a UR zone, the developer is able to have higher density, hopefully it would be a more affordable product that would complement the neighborhoods. Hopefully, it would be a more affordable product that would complement the neighborhoods. There's also a possibility for roadway connections that could benefit the surrounding neighborhoods. But at this time, there is no site plan, no development sketch plan submitted, nor does the applicant is required to submit that. And I'll discuss the follow-on steps for development of the property should the zoning be changed. The last goal, objective that I'd like to refer to is an economic development objective to increase the desirability for, to live in Woodland Park. And the higher density does provide for more housing options and for future residents as an infill development. This I consider an infill because the surrounding neighborhoods have developed already. This is kind of a vacant tract that is just ready to be able to easily develop between these neighborhoods. And then more units will also contribute to a larger tax base. So, the next question we ask is, what has changed in the surrounding properties that could warrant or support a change in the zoning? So, a little bit of history, more history, is that since the annexation of this property, it was zoned agricultural. And that's primarily because it had forest next to it at the time. The Northwoods subdivision was just beginning to develop under the R1 Zone, which is 2.9 acres per, or units per acre with 15,000 square foot lots. The Forest Service, the Spielman Tract, that was being traded. And the owners of the Spielman Tract then just held on to it for a while. There was an initiative to develop it in the 1990s that was eventually taken off the table. It wasn't until the early 2000s then that Dana Duncan acquired the Spielman Tract and developed Stone Ridge. So, and that's what, 2004, when Stone Ridge was annexed and developed with two acre, two units per acre. And the first filing of Stone Ridge had an average lot size of 18,000 square feet adjacent to the Aspandell. Some of the lots in Stone Ridge are 11,000 square feet, which are closer toward Highway And so, therefore, a density of one dwelling unit per gross acre is really dissimilar to the way the Stone Ridge and Northwoods has developed. And an SR zone encourages sprawl. That really is not smart development. And so, the UR zone makes much more sense, more compatibility, reduces the infrastructure needs, and avoids the case of sprawl. So, what is the appropriateness of this UR zone in this area? And it's considered an infill tract between two subdivisions. The use of the existing infrastructure surrounding this parcel would be put to better use with 20 units. And this is, shows you the water system that has already developed in Stone Ridge and in Northwoods. So, it allows for more units to be on the infrastructure system or the water system. It's in proximity to other facilities in the community, so it's easily serviced by transportation corridors. I've mentioned it's a very developable parcel due to its terrain, access, and proximity to services. It provides for an orderly progression of development in this area and reduces sprawl. So, then we drill down to, do we have the capacity to serve this property? And water is a finite resource in Woodland Park, and we have to be very conscious about increasing density, especially based on our water resources. And we have been keeping track since 1999 of our vacant lots and the potential build-out in Woodland Park because we don't want to over-commit ourselves with units and growth that eventually Woodland Park can't serve. And what this vacant lot study does is forecast, how will properties within the community develop, the undeveloped portion? And right now, we have a population of about 7,500 folks who live within our six and a half square miles of land mass. That is about 60% of our build-out. We have the water capacity of 1,475 acre-feet of developable water at this point in time to be able to serve about 12,600 people. And in our forecast, we have to look at our crystal ball, and it's not always very sharp, but we have to look at that and say to ourselves, how will these undeveloped parcels, what would their densities be? And in some cases, for example, the golf course, which has only developed a very small portion of Fairway Pines, it has allotted to it over 350 units that it's going to be quite difficult to build out the golf course at that density. We've also allocated to units to the downtown Woodland Station. There's 112 units allocated to that, thinking that it would develop as a mixed-use community. But we don't know whether it's going to develop fully commercial or whether it will have a mixed use. But we're making our best projection and scenario for that. And so, right now, our forecast does forecast us at about 13,000 people or about 165 units, more than what our water supply could handle. However, again, our crystal ball is not that sharp. And one of the things that is really hard to focus on is the older parts of Woodland Park are platted with 7,500 square foot lots. And so, we have lots of record in the older parts of town that is prone for infill and could even have things like scraping old cabins and where they're sitting on two or three lots, and then you get two or three infills. So, we've made our best guess of how the older parts of town will infill, and, but we just don't know how that really is going to happen. But again, we're only at 60% of build-out right now. So, adding 10 more units does not tip or break the last straw that breaks the camel's back. It really is a very minor addition in the growth. Our city utilities director, Kip Wiley, did write a memo that explained all of this. And he did not either support this or oppose it. He wanted you to just understand that we are very conscientious about our future planning for water and making sure that we don't over-commit our resources on the long term. On the short term, the city currently has the water ability to serve 20 units on this site. Again, on the long term, it's difficult to predict. However, we have been very responsible about every plat that is approved in the city. There is a plat note that says that there is no guarantee that if you wait a long period of time and at the end of our build-out, there may not be the resources to supply them. So, we have legally covered our future long-term vision with those plat notes. And then, do we have the capacity to serve wastewater treatment? Most of you know that we are now in an $8 million upgrade expansion to our wastewater plant. That will be able to serve a population of 14,100. So, we are well within that projection, even with the 13,000 that the vacant lot study now projects. So, that expansion is expected to be completed next year. And so, yes, there is a capacity for wastewater. And this is the sewer map that shows the sewer lines in Northwoods as well as Tarmigan and the Stone Ridge subdivision. For the Aspandell area, the key factor for wastewater is gravity flow. And the nice part about this development is that it's on the north side of our community, which all flows toward the Trout Creek and the Platte River watershed, and that our wastewater plant is on the north side. Currently, the, all the sewage that is on the south side of Woodland Park has to be collected down near Wal-Mart and is pumped up over the divide and to the north. So, having higher density on the north side can be easily served with a gravity flow Mentioned the future development process of land, should it be upzoned or even at its current zone? It will be required to meet all of the city's subdivision standards and development standards. The next step, taking a raw piece of land and creating a subdivision, is first done with a preliminary plat. This actually is the most important planning portion of a subdivision because it is done based on its topography to identify the roads, the lots, the utilities, and how the drainage is going to work and function. And then after a preliminary plat is approved, then the developer is required to create construction drawings, detailed construction drawings for those roads, utilities. And then they final-platted into specific lots per the preliminary plat. And then that gets recorded, and the developer is able to convey lots with a final plat. The next step is then each owner is going to propose individual homes on those lots, and that goes through a review with the city and with the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department based on the International Residential Code. And so, when home construction occurs, we look very carefully at the placement of the home, the driveway, the grading, drainage, tree preservation, lighting, parking, all architecture design, and all those details with developing a neighborhood. So, that would be the next steps in the development of a true subdivision on the Aspandell property. So, with that, the staff believes that this is a reasonable request to have an urban residential development and recommends approval of the zoning change. And that concludes my review.
I have two staff. Yes, absolutely. Sally?
Yes.
Thank you. I just have two quick questions. Let me grab them. One is on water. And about the commentary that Kip provided, Kip's not here, but I wanted to just ask for your opinion. Are there other tracts such as this that could be rezoned to a higher density that could therefore squeeze our water supply on a quicker basis than we've assumed? And again, it's, my question is not an exhaustive look at that big book, but it's really your opinion based on your knowledge. And behind my question is sort of addressing, attempting to address Kip's concern, which is, you know, 10 more homes don't necessarily, may not be alarming, but suddenly if there's a lot of other tracts that could be so more densely developed that currently aren't zoned to be that way, do we have a concern with that?
I don't really foresee many property owners, undeveloped property coming forward with density increases. The last one that we did do was fairly significant. It was the Tamarack Tech Park that was zoned heavy service, commercial, light industrial. And it did not develop for many, many years. As we know, the manufacturing and light industrial businesses just are not attracted to Woodland Park. We're not at an airport or a rail line or those sorts of facilities. So, those owners did come to the city and asked if we would consider multifamily. And right now, the city has about a half dozen properties that are undeveloped that are zoned multifamily, and we felt by adding that tech park, that was a reasonable thing to do. But most of the tracts are either already pre-programmed with a PUD with their plans significant, that are fully finalized and/or they're already platted.
Okay. So, this is unlikely to trigger a series of rezoning requests?
Yes. We don't see too many at all.
Okay. And then I have one question, just to clarify on density. The proposed change to urban residential allows two units per gross acre with a minimum size of 7,500. But, so, my first question is, under no circumstances, regardless of how this is all configured, once the plating is done, could there be more than 20 homes put in here?
No, there could not.
My second question is that the surrounding developments are currently more, they're more densely developed than this as it stands today?
That's correct. They're more densely developed than one dwelling unit per gross acre.
And so, my final question is that if this was to be approved, this approval would create a situation in which this tract could, would not be more densely developed than the current surrounding developments that already exist?
That's correct. And that's why the staff believes this is a compatible and reasonable request.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else up here at this point? Jerry?
Yes, Sally. When I read Kip's memo, I didn't read it as he was neutral on this proposal. Because upfront, he says, "The proposal is inconsistent with the property zoning, the city's master plan, and the city's water development plan." So, I assume that you had discussions with him, that he told you that... So I assume that you had discussions with him, that he told you that this wasn't something that he would oppose?
Yes, that's correct.
The other comment, based on the utilities, is that we're already above the twelve-six.
We are.
So going further above it, to me, is a problem that the city needs to deal with to either get it back to the twelve-six or not continue to increase it.
I hear what you're saying, but we are only sixty percent built out. And to deny a ten units, an additional ten units at this time, is, I believe, poor planning for this property. This property would not be consistent at one dwelling unit per acre. And I would be happy to go through, again, I have put many units into that thirteen thousand that we expect will not develop or will change. I'll give you an example. The two mobile home parks that are currently in the city. We don't expect that they're going to be mobile home parks forever, that they will, they are not zoned currently for mobile home parks. So there's over a hundred units right there that will one day eventually go away. The golf course, as I mentioned, I do not believe will build out at three hundred and fifty units. The downtown, the two hundred and twelve units that we've allocated. The infill, we've proposed that every lot of record, over seventy percent of them will be built on. I don't know if that crystal ball will come through. We still are only sixty percent built out, and to make a decision based on a forecast that has so many variables in it, today, to make a decision today about ten units does not trouble me because the forecast is not well, it's just got a lot of variables in it, and it hasn't been really drilled down to what we can predict.
One of the things that happened, you remember the Water Wise program? Back when we had, in a drought situation, we went to the Water Wise program to limit the amount of water. Since that time, we've put in requirements of how many square feet of grass you can use, and how much water you can use. At one time, that unit, that amount got almost fourteen thousand. Always had some partments and that. So there's a lot of leeway to be able to create more of that. And water department folks like Kip get real possessive with their water, and that's fine, that's what they're supposed to do.
But I'd like to add that we have reduced our amount of water that we've used per capita or per individual over time because we have become more conscientious, more water-wise. But really, it's because we have more water fixture units, fixtures, toilets and showerheads that use less water. So that's another variable. We are seeing a reduction in our residents using less and less water. They don't landscape, as the chair mentioned. We use a zero-scape approach, more native approach. So, again, it's many, many factors that we're not so concerned about ten units at this time.
Anybody else? Jerry, was that it? Was that it? Okay.
What kind of precedent would we be setting if we were to approve this for future applications of the same park? Is, are, would we be legally bound then to approve another subdivision of this sort or division of the subdivision?
It's a great question because each case is taken on a case-by-case basis on its own merits, and you are not legally bound. It does not set a precedence. Each zoning case is unique and can be evaluated based on its own merits.
Are we ready to go on the applicant? It's your turn. You should come up and tell us who you are and all that good kind of stuff, Mr. Randolph.
Good evening, Steve Randolph, one-two-one-one Mountain Meadows Drive. I'd like to say that I had a lot more to add to Sally's presentation, but there's not really a lot to add to that at this stage. In the absence of a requirement for a site plan or a preliminary plat, it's basically pretty much the way she's described it, which matches what I've been envisioning for the fifteen years that I've owned the property. Basically, just that it would be a continuation of the neighborhood character in lot size, in roadway, that was already there. So still interested in my part on doing anything other than what's been already done in the surrounding neighborhoods, which I think has been explained quite well. Happy to answer any questions.
I have one quick one.
Sure.
Please, go ahead, I've already spoken.
Well, I just, so you probably won't go down to that seventy-five hundred square feet, or are you thinking senior patio homes, or, you know, I try to think of something smaller, one level, or, but you're thinking it will stay in the character of Stone Ridge and Northwoods?
Right, single-family detached fifteen thousand or plus or minus square foot lots. What will emerge if this gets approved? As I go in later to look at the, where should the lot lines be, and how big will those resulting lots then be in terms of square footage? A lot of that's going to be based on where is the, where does the terrain dictate a good location for a boundary line to run between two homes? So I did a subdivision a few years ago called Spruce Ridge, and that's exactly what I did there. I spent a lot of time just walking around the terrain, looking at the ridge lines, looking at the drainages, looking at the view corridors, looking at how are the neighbors impacted, things like that, and probably redid those lot lines three, four, five times.
So they won't just be cookie cutter, there will be some varying sizes depending on terrain?
Yes. And a lot of my personal priority is to preserve that Aspen stand. So I don't necessarily want to take advantage of the terrain there just because it's buildable. I want to protect as many of the trees as I can and keep those because, to me, that's a, that adds value to the property for buyers that are considering that location. They see that stand of Aspen, it's a whole lot more valuable to them than if they see scraped off decomposing granite.
What level of buyer do you envision?
That, that's a very good question. The first project I did, I thought, oh, these buyers are going to be kind of based on the surrounding neighborhoods numbers. At that time, I thought a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar house would probably be about as big a house, as much money as somebody would be willing to spend. And to my surprise and pleasure, people wanted to build six-hundred-thousand-dollar houses in there. So I thought, I would have never expected that. So to answer your question more directly, it goes back to what keeps coming up with Sally's presentation, is it's basically a continuation of the surrounding types of homes, architectural styles, values, square footages, that, you know, they all have to work within, obviously, the city's design standards. But then there's an element of character that you can just completely destroy, in my opinion, destroy the value of a neighborhood by, by making things too plain and too cheaply constructed, et cetera. So I'm interested in kind of maximizing the value without getting into trophy home and McMansion type stuff.
Jerry?
Yeah, I've got a little clarification on my part. When you bought this property fifteen years ago, how many houses per acre did you envision?
Twenty.
Twenty? What was it zoned at that time?
A-one.
Okay. It was zoned for twenty houses at that time?
No.
What was it zoned for? Ten? Okay.
So, so there's a, there's a, excuse me, there's a, a way to look at the, if you look at A-one and decide, okay, what will, what will that become? If it can become suburban residential or urban residential, then it's twenty if it's urban. And so, in the little preliminary sketches that I drew before I ever made an offer on the thing, I imagined exactly what Sally described as the extension of Kelly's.
Correct?
Yeah. To the west, going straight through and, and coming in at the northern boundary of this property. So my original thinking had been drop down a U-shaped residential street, much like Tarmigan is, off the northern boundary, make a U, come in, go out, twenty houses. It seemed very practical.
Peter, do you have a question?
Just really quickly, thank you. You've owned the property for a fairly good number of years, and it's, it's been zoned for ten homes. And in the interim, the Stone Ridge development has taken off very nicely. We drove through there a lot when we were looking to build. We eventually built somewhere else, but it's a lovely place. So neighbors get used to a certain kind of open space. And, you know, it's kind of more a curiosity question than anything. Why didn't you consider maybe applying for a rezoning quite a number of years ago? And this would, you know, have just been all taken care of.
There was, in, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's.
There was not a compelling reason.
Okay.
At the time. As I chatted with some of the neighbors the other night, I admitted the fact that I even thought at one point that I might just put a single house in there, mine, and have a ten-acre lot that'd be completely buffered. And I had some fantasies about having a family compound, my two sons would have homes and all of that, but that, that was truly a fantasy that would have never panned out in terms of practicality. Some realtors convinced me that that's not a good idea. You know, it's fine for you and your sons, but it won't sell in the future. So I kind of abandoned that, just went back to the traditional thinking of single-family detached, half-acre lots, or fifteen thousand square foot lots, maybe two dwelling units per acre, very familiar, comfortable. When you see the zoning map and you look at the array of lots and sizes, that's kind of where it all falls, so there's nothing out of the, out of the ordinary about it.
Okay, so you kind of evolved your thinking over the years of ownership and you are where you are today?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but to give you a little bit more insight there, at the time I bought it, housing in Woodland Park was booming. We were limiting water taps. Sometimes a builder had to wait until the following calendar year.
To get one.
To get a water tap because we'd used them all. So that seemed to me like, because I'd just come off the Spruce Ridge project, seemed like to me a keep-going kind of a thing. And it wasn't long, though, before that all collapsed, and it's, it's not coming back until now.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Steve, a question. A lot of these people are concerned because I think that seventy-five hundred square feet ability within, within you are scarce being. Because, but yet, when you figure out forty percent of the land is going to be landscaped, I mean, you don't see, because there's nothing put on it, and everybody fears the unknown that's what it's going to look like. But it doesn't seem like that makes sense to do that because of the fact you only can have two acres, two lots per acre anyway, and you're less dense than the other two from that standpoint.
Correct.
It just, and I, but I think that's what happens, is you just say, why in the world is it not, say, seventy-five hundred is up at the house where it used to be back then? Central Woodland Park or whatever it was. Just doesn't seem that's even possible. But you also can do cluster and things and give a lot more open space.
Yep.
There's a lot of flexibility and things you can do by varying lot size and varying open spaces. Doesn't have to be a straight cookie cutter approach, you can be somewhat creative with it, whether you or whoever develops it, you do that.
Sure.
Have a fair assessment?
Yes.
Couple of quick questions, just to start off. There's two access points to the lot that are, and you just got utilizing those two, the northwest and the east entry point, or is there some kind of circle road you're anticipating, or maybe it hasn't been developed that far yet?
There are a lot of creative thought processes have occurred, including both of those access points. And kind of my best-case conclusion has been, for years, maybe use that Northwoods access point for a small group of maybe three lots that are accessed without having an internal roadway, because I don't want to cross that swale, that drainage swale that runs through there, requiring culverts and a lot more disfiguration of the property and taking out a lot of vegetation. So to me, it doesn't, it doesn't require both access points to connect nor from one side to the other. So my thinking has been, let's just use that one in the corner for a handful of lots, three, maybe five. One thing that's going to constrain that is the elevation, the invert of the, since you're an engineer-type guy, the invert elevation of the main, sewer main going through there. If you go too far down grade, then you're, you're, you can't hit it with gravity flow. So that kind of constrains what can happen in that northwest corner. Then everything else just goes to the easterly side of the property. And back when north, when Tarmigan was being, sewer line was going in Tarmigan, I went ahead and connected a sewer main coming out of my property and connecting into the main that's in the road of Tarmigan. So that, that sewer discharge line's already in place. So that gives me basically same thing with traffic as with sewer, two points of access.
Thank you. And then, any anticipated schedule for moving forward with this development?
I don't have a firm plan. I've been approached a number of times over the years by different builders who had different ideas about how many to build and what type and all that. And I'm now considering seriously working with a couple of builders here in town who are, who have purchased two lots on Tarmigan, and they're, they're going to have a couple houses in place there that they consider proof of concept houses, that I want to see what they do. I want to see that house on Tarmigan and decide if that's what I think is suitable to commit this property to. They're in a position to want me to commit to them, but I'm not willing to do that until I see a lot more evidence of what they're going to do.
No immediate schedule?
No.
Nothing in the near future?
The earliest, given what, right now, all they have on one of their lots is a soils test excavation. I go by there every two, three days. Nothing more happens. So I think, well, eventually, somebody will come in and start putting in footer excavations, and then we'll see that, when are they going to be done? That'll be about a six-month, I imagine, project for them. So that gets you all, to me, gets you through this whole building season. So not much could happen then until the, the spring of eighteen.
Thank you.
With that, with that size of a tract, ten acres, what is going to be the requirement for open space by the city? by the city or?
I'll let Sally answer that.
It's a dedication of parkland that we look at first, so I need to give you the fraction per unit. And then we can, I didn't bring my calculator, but let me look up the fraction. But each lot, as I mentioned, has to keep at least forty percent, if not more, of that lot as unbuilt. So they don't, they, when the subdivision comes in, it's up to the developer to propose either a dedication to the city of parkland or open space, or they pay fees in lieu of that parkland. So it will take me a minute to find what that actual fraction is. I'll come back to it.
Is it based on the number of units or the acreage itself?
It's based on the number of units and a fraction for each unit. I'm going to look in the subdivision.
Just as a footnote there, my experience with the city over the years has been, we don't want no more land and dirt. We want money. So they're very happy to take the fees in lieu of the open space.
Or the parkland. That is, that is usually the case.
Yeah.
A PUD has a certain sliding scale based on the acreage. So PUD is different than a straight zone. This is called a straight zone or a tradi, traditional zone. So it'll take me a minute to find it. Keep asking questions.
Anybody else?
One of the things that's also difficult, I'll just stretch. There will be, if this continues forward, there will be four more public hearings. There will be one at the preliminary plat here. There'll be one at the final plat here. There'll be one at the preliminary plat with the city. And there'll be one at the final plat with the city. So with a concrete plan in front of you showing all of that stuff, that will give the opportunity at each of those four sections to pass it with amendments. We'll approve that if changes, recommendations. We've done that how many times before when we vote on something? So this isn't do or die tonight in the sense that it's done, it's not done. It's because the real meat of it comes when somebody takes the time, wants to do it, and presents a plan. And that point in time, you've got points that you can talk about about that and get probably more concrete and criticisms or suggestions or whatever you have with that. And it's just, that's just the process, and that, that takes months to do that stuff. The, the meeting on with the city council that she talked about in July twentieth, that's just to approve the same thing. That's all it is. It's nothing to do with preliminary, final plans, none of that stuff. So that all stuff will probably be off for, for a very decent time. Did you find it?
I did. So whenever a subdivision comes in, they do have to address whether they're proposing a parkland dedication or fees in lieu. That parkland dedication is point zero-two-seven acres per residential dwelling unit. So in the case of twenty, it would be a very small, small pocket-type park. That is not what the city's master plan for Parks, Trails, and Open Space would want. So again, it is the fees in lieu of that parkland that we would be leaning toward.
But again, no matter how this is ultimately configured, there would not be more than twenty units, single-family units allowed on this parcel.
On ten acres, that's correct.
Thank you.
Are we ready to go on to the public comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be happy to respond to the comments from the public.
After the public comment, it's called rebuttal of the Africa. First person is Larry Watt. We need you to spell your name and where you're from.
My name's Larry Wood. I live on eleven-ninety Tarmigan Drive. I back up to the property. We've had two community meetings, and I just wanted to tell you real quick that we've been elected to speak, speak for the media, or for the, for a lot of the group, not everybody, because there's some people here who weren't here. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation that we wanted to talk about. The one thing that, a couple of things that weren't on my PowerPoint that I wanted to, that wasn't on the PowerPoint that I wanted to start with immediately is, if this rezoning happens, there's nothing keeping Mr. Randolph from selling immediately. So, well, 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 you know, when, when you have the thing that this is going to be this way. The other thing is I'm a, I'm a mathematician. And so twenty fifteen-thousand acre, or third-acre lots is six and two-thirds acre just for the lots. That doesn't include infrastructure. That doesn't include keeping the aspens. It doesn't include a half-acre plus park, which is what it would be if you took a look at it. It doesn't include the drainage. And I have a drainage dish right behind my house that I don't know, I don't, I can't see that being built, built upon, but it wasn't really talked about. It was a natural, maybe that's because they built the tube underneath. So I'm just curious. I think it would be hard-pressed, especially with the terrain, to say that we're going to continue the continuity of the lots. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there first. We're going to take teeth in this presentation.
Good afternoon, or goo, good evening, Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Larry Larson. As a point of disclaimer, I will let you know that I too have spent a career being a professional planner, thirty-six years. And seven of those I spent with the city of Woodland Park. So I'm also, served on the planning commission for three years for the city, and I'm currently a member of the Board of Adjustment.
And you live that?
For the record? Yes.
He didn't give your address.
Thirteen-twenty Michael Lane.
Scott, now you're good.
Okay. There's a lot of things that Sally had already said in her presentation. As we go through our presentation, we're going to just kind of skip through it. Matter of saving time. What we want to do is kind of give you an overview of our concerns, talk about the staff report and the process analysis, and then offer you our recommendation. Again, what we're going to recommend at the end of our presentation that this application be denied. We have, we're submitting a petition which includes seventy-three signatures. Those signatures come from both the Stone Ridge and the Northwoods area, of people opposing to this. Don't need to say again, but this particular ten-acre parcel is surrounded by our neighborhoods, Stone Ridge being PUD and Northwoods being a suburban residential. We've had two neighborhood meetings. And again, this change of zoning does not meet the neighborhood's long-held expectations of how this property was zoned to be developed. Again, there's a map of the area. I live right there, Michael Lane. Here is the drainage swale that Sally referred to. This used to be a beautiful uplands wetland area that has been degraded in the last ten, twelve years. It's pretty minimal, but it sure would be nice to have that restored again. Again, kind of an overview of the zoning. This property was annexed nineteen-eighty-one as A1 with, with the intended use for agricultural grazing nineteen-ninety, ninety-seven. The citywide zoning change changed both Northwoods as well as this parcel to the suburban residential district. We supported that at the time. We thought it was beneficial and we embraced the change primarily because it allowed one dwelling per acre. That was a reduction in density for that parcel. And we thought that was a good thing. Again, then Steve and his company brought the property in two thousand and two. And now you see before you the change of zoning, which allow ten, twelve, twenty units instead of ten. And there's no plans to review at this time. It was brought up by the Chairman de Bois that, that those meetings will get into the details of how it's developed. We're mostly concerned about the density. There's a big impact difference between ten dwellings and twenty. We're going to hopefully explain that to you. And certainly the minimum lot sizes have changed. Our primary concern is not the use against single-family. We, we think this site is appropriate for single-family dwelling. The density and the minimum lot size are not in character with the existing neighborhood. And again, when you're going to hear an analysis of how much land it takes to develop and how much for lots, roads, open space, so on and so forth, it's going to be quite different than what you've heard so far. And again, the change is from ten to twenty in the middle of lot sizes. I'm going to turn it back over to my brother Larry, and he, he will talk a little bit about the analysis of this.
Yes. The staff report, um, how do I move next?
Yeah.
This one? Okay. This is this one? There we go. First thing I wanted to do is just talk about the access and traffic. In Sally's report, she did say that it would, we could provide access between Northwoods and, and Stone Ridge. Definitely that would cut, have cut through traffic, not something we definitely want with little kids playing around. Because cut-through traffic, I lived through it. When people cut through the neighborhood to get from one place to another, they don't follow speed limits or stop signs. This will, it will clog Highway sixty-seven. At, at coming home from work and going to work times, sixty-seven the stop sign at sixty-seven in Stone Ridge can be a bear to cross that street. And it can be a long time. You add twenty more houses and maybe part of Northridge going through it, Northwoods, it's going to cause, could cause some problems. Drainage and topography, again, the drainage and detention pond were sized to accommodate ten additional homes, probably can go more. But that's what the two thousand and five study was. And again, we wanted to talk about restoring the wetlands that were originally there. Now, this is, this is where I come in. I mean, I am, I said I was a mathematician, and I have done dozens and dozens of analyses. I had to, we had to, and now I was department chair of my math department, and we had to analyze all our courses, all our, everything that we did. And they were based on objectives. We could not cherry-pick our objectives to meet the requirements of our principal. If I had twenty objectives, I had to go through twenty objectives. I had to state what we did, how we measured it, what was the outcome. Okay? So when you do an analysis, you require, it requires to review the entire set of criteria to go ahead and just say, okay, we're going to look at this thing, it fits it. Okay? It fits this part of the plan, therefore it fits the plan, the comprehensive plan. Well, if, if it doesn't fit the other parts of the comprehensive plan, does it fit the comprehensive plan? Not really. Okay? If you're sitting there and saying, and I'm going to show the, the first one, this is a lack of, what I consider a lack of analysis. Okay? Land use and growth objective one point one. In this, in Sally's report, she used the terms, the comprehensive, does this go to it? Yes. The comprehensive plan map? Yes, we agree. Okay? And use of land, comedy, community resources, facilities efficiency. And she mentioned sprawl, which is really urban sprawl, right? That's what you're kind of talking about. And environment sensitive management. She hit that part. Okay, here we go. It should contribute to Woodland Park's mountain western identity. Okay, changing lot sizes. And I don't agree that we're going to be able to put fifteen thousand lots, twenty fifteen thousand lots on that property. Okay? I don't think so. All right? Is it going to be able to put a seventy-five-hundred square foot lot? He says he, the law says you can't. Okay? And that's worrisome. It's like, I'm going to write a check to you and you're going to say you're going to put a hundred dollars in it and you put a thousand dollars instead of a hundred. I have a problem. And so do the rest of the people with that. Respecting individually property rights. Preserving residential and commercial real estate property values. Depending on the lots and the homes, okay? If they are not consistent with our sizes, you could not put my house on a quarter acre. It won't fit. Okay? My house won't fit. So my level of house, it concerns me on the level of housing and everybody else. And the neighborhood character for this neighborhood, for the surrounding neighborhood, is a third of an acre. And as you go further north and further west from this property, the lot sizes are going to remain the same or increase according to the PUD. Okay? If you go north of my house along sixty-seven, past, down, down past sixty-seven, the properties are actually going to decrease and be extremely high-density. Okay? There's some, uh, vary in the PUD plan. Okay? Here I had some issues as mathematician. If we take a look at this, I outlined a couple of things that I have that are being, trying to be compared. The lot sizes are eighteen thousand two hundred square feet, the average ones, which is two-point-three-nine units per acre. Now, again, they're using the correct thing because it's units per gross acre of forty-three thousand. And saying it's real dissimilar to the existing parcels. Well, this number, the two-point-three-nine units per acre, okay? That's not including all our open spa, or, you know, that's, that's taking away our open space. That's taking away our infrastructure that we, we use for this. The one unit per gross acre is including all that. So you're not comparing the same thing. Okay? You'd have to compare lot sizes with lot sizes. You can't take lot sizes with one lot per acre. Okay? What are the lot sizes actually going to be? The other issue is that UR zone is up to two units per gross acre. Okay, one of the things that we're using here is average density. Average density for a three-hundred-and-sixty-unit parcel that has an extremely high density set at one end and a very low density where I live and continuing is very different than comparing it to a ten-acre tract inside. It's sort of like two classes. If I had a class where I had ten As and ten Fs and a seventy-five percent average, I have a C average. My principal would be knocking on my door and saying, why do you have ten Fs? He wouldn't be saying you have a, a C average in your class. He'd be saying I have ten Fs. So when you compare densities of these two units to compare densities of a three-hundred-and-sixty-unit PUD that has such varying differences to a ten-acre unit that has ten to twenty. The one other thing that, if you saw Sally's presentation, you must have seen sprawl mentioned six or seven times somewhere. Urban sprawl, it will eliminate urban sprawl. Ten units, or reduce it, not eliminate. Reduce it, yes, yeah, reduce it. Ten units. Okay, sixty percent built. We have a, what, two thousand right now? Apartments and, and homes in the city? Ten units is a fraction of one percent. And that's reducing our urban sprawl. Okay? I have a, I think that's a pretty good stretch for that to, to do that type of analysis. I already talked through that. The water analysis. This is another one, and some of you mentioned it. Kip Wiley's first, I, I think. Kip Wiley's first, I think, again, they cherry picked some things. They did use some things that were for and against. But when a letter from the city waters developer, utilities director starts, the proposal is inconsistent with the property zoning, the city's master plan, and the city's water development plan? I agree. That doesn't sound like a man who's agreeing with it. Again, the city's committed to already 13,000. And Kip said that it's due to annexation or density increases already. That's 156 units, I think he said something of that nature in his letter. Now, this is the problem. The problem of adding out water taps without, you know, that aren't designated in the master plan, you're Robin Peter to play Paul. Okay? And yes, we are doing things for water resource. I think that's really, really important. But we have no idea. And the crystal ball, that crystal ball, it's not good for anybody. Okay? Nobody can predict this real well. But the utility director probably has a much better understanding of it than any of us, I would think. Here's a couple of things that I have. A valid analysis must be objective and thorough. You don't find one objective and say it works. You go through each and every objective, you give a rationale, and you talk about, you list the pros and cons. A valid analysis should list the pro and cons. I didn't see many cons. Okay? In the staff planning, in the staff planning report for this. A valid analysis uses data appropriately. If you're going to use an average density with an average density, those properties, you know, really should be similar to give it a comparison, a fair comparison. And a valid analysis of reason should be free of any appearance conclusion between the applicants and the preparers. Now, this is from our, and I'm going to put this, this is appearance. Okay? You have to realize, most of us have come to Stone Ridge especially as new owners. We are not aware of what has gone on in Woodland Park. We have no clue. Okay? When we hear that the former mayor is going to do this, and I'm just giving this as a feel, it's not necessarily that this is the case. Okay? At all. That's why I said appearance. But we have concerns. We have concerns. Okay? Of being rubber stamped. And that's something I just wanted to share, that we had concerns with this. Okay? Woodland Park core values, we all know them. Customer service, integrity, stewardship, team building, respect, loyalty, and trust. We had some issues with, as a community, with the rezone process. The recommendation to approve was written with absolutely no public input. You guys have read the letters. There was absolutely nothing in the report, the staff planning report, that addressed those levels of concern, either for or against. Okay? There wasn't much there. Planning staff did the minimum required by law to inform the affected community. And this comes from our meeting on Tuesday with Ms. Riley and Mr. Randolph. We were asking a number of different questions. Every time we asked a question, it says, that's what's required by law. That's all that's required by law. That's all that's required by law. The mailing, while this, the mailing, it's required by law just to go to the adjoining properties. It affects people right down the road from those adjoining properties because of traffic, because of possibly lowering our property values in the area having smaller homes. Even though it's done by law, isn't it better customer service to notify a few more people in the surrounding area? Wouldn't that be a nicer thing? The planning staff did not explain the process. Now, this is where I wanted to, Mr. Devoe, I really want to, I appreciate that you explain what the process is going to be afterwards. Okay? I think that's very important, especially for us newcomers who have never gone in front of council, never talked to people, never had to go through this. I mean, I built this house expecting one acre, you know, 10, 10 houses behind me. I'm happy with that. Okay? I'm happy with that. That's fine. That's a great use of that property. So we didn't get a lot of explanation in this note. We did get a number to call. Okay? Mr. Larson, being a former planner, took us by the horns and helped us out, got us going. The planning was scheduled, the scheduled process was scheduled over the holiday weekend, Memorial Weekend. We were told we had to have letters in by the first. Well, that was three days after Memorial Weekend. So trying to organize a neighborhood during Memorial Weekend, and we had heard of this the Thursday before Memorial Weekend. So trying to organize the neighborhood to get together and talk about our feelings and feel what we wanted to do, and also get letters written within only a few days, and having nothing in our communications that said we needed to do that. I'm feeling that this level of communication does not fit with Woodland Park's stated values. Okay? I think there's some issue there. I think, especially towards customer service, we are the customers. Okay? So we had a little bit of a problem with that. I'm going to turn this back over to Larry.
When Larry and I are completed with our presentation, we'll be open for questions at that time. We wanted to give you the entire presentation first. Again, we're respectfully asking you to deny this rezone change based on the findings of the application does not comply with the following rezoning criteria. Again, being selective on our objectives, we use the same objective that Sally mentioned and that Larry analyzed before. We believe that this particular project does not respect the individual property rights of the adjoining property owners, it doesn't preserve the residential and commercial property values in upholding our existing neighborhood integrity for the character. Further, we found that it does not comply with land use in Zone Growth Action 1.18, which is the respect of taking into account the property rights of impacted property adjourners, maintain the overall integrity and character of Woodland Park neighborhoods. We're very proud of our neighborhoods, by the way, and are sufficiently harmonious with adjacent land uses to preserve and protect the property values of those properties in the same adjacent zone. We further find that it doesn't comply with land use and growth action 1.19, encourage quality infill development. Basically, that it is, to find that it is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood character. And again, reducing that lot size, and as Larry tried to explain with his analysis, that won't do it. It still won't fit with the character of our neighborhood. What has changed in the surrounding properties that warranted zone change since 1997? And that's the date we looked at from the date when the, this property, the property for Northwoods Zones, Suburban Residential, that it, that the surrounding area is still zoned that way in accordance with the PUD zoning within Stone Ridge. And since that, again, it, zoning has not changed. Being developed as, as our development standards, both Northwoods and surrounding area, again, minimum lot size, number of acres. There has been no significant changes to the area and the surrounding area. Describe the appropriateness of the urban residential district. The urban district is not appropriate. Why? Because this parcel is completely surrounded by the suburban residential zone district on the west and the south side. And then with on the north and on the east side, there is zone PUD, but it's developed as if it was a suburban residential district, minimum lot size 15,000 square feet, et cetera. Both the Northwoods and the surrounding portion of Stone Ridge have been developed utilizing those standards. Yeah, Northwoods have been developed in the early 80s, late 70s. Stone Ridge later, but after that particular time, they utilized those standards, again, the minimum lot size in the acreage. Describe the appropriateness of the urban residential district for this location. Urban residential is not appropriate for this area. As Sally showed you on the zoning map, this area has suburban residential all around it. Most of the zoning urban residential district is located closer to the downtown area, the old portions of the downtown where there were smaller lots. And Sally's analysis is correct. There have been a couple of occasions that warranted or changed zoning to the urban residential, and we don't think they fit in this particular instance. Maybe in the other two, evidently they did and they were allowed to be approved. We don't think it fits in this particular area. Next one. The isolated single family zone change surrounding by existing suburban residential district in the PUD development design utilizing the single family development standards may be considered spot zoning. Spot zoning is illegal and certainly bad policy. And courts have found that spot zoning occurs when zoning applies to and benefits a single parcel or landowner and is not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or surrounding Larry, you want to go on, or you want me to do this?
Go ahead.
Okay. Larry? Yes, sir.
We read the trade limit into five minutes a person.
Okay.
And we're not going to do questions and answers after you tell your, because we're going to give everybody a chance to talk. And they will have questions and answers at that point.
I have three slides left.
That's all.
All right. Okay. Does the city have the availability to serve this proposed 20 dwelling units with available water sources? Again, you've all questioned and saw Mr. Wiley's report. We do have concerns. We do support his analysis. And we think it's very important that the city be proactive on how those taps, when they go beyond what's already been allocated, how you deal with that. And even though it's only 10 units, that is significant when you look at the cumulative Again, we recommend that you deny this particular project. Is the zoning compatible with in the surrounding area? No, it's not. We believe that keeping it as the surrounding area, suburban residential is the right way to go. So again, we ask you to deny that, the application before you. And we're also going to ask our fellow neighbors who appointed Larry and myself to be the spokesmen to limit their comments to comments that have not been fully explained or expressed on their behalf, and to reemphasize major concerns. And we would be very glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah Dobbs.
Hello, nothing.
Jerry Dobbs.
I just wanted to say that I support the presentation. Personally, I'm not as concerned about the 20, the 20 houses that are taken. Two per acre is consistent with the 20, but more concerned about the 7,500 square feet. I wanted to ask you a question. If the need for this neighborhood can be improved and amended to a larger...
You need to come up to me.
It's got to be on the tape. That's the only reason.
I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that they said, and their presentation represented a lot of us. I'm not as concerned about the rezoning and the ability to build 20 houses. That's two per acre, Stone Ridge is somewhere around that. What I'm more concerned about is the 7,500 square foot minimum. And I wanted to ask, is it possible that if it were approved, it could be approved and amended for a larger minimum lot size? Is that possible? Something more consistent with the neighborhood. You look at your maps and you won't find a 7,500 square foot house anywhere, anywhere around there. And that's my only comment.
Thank you. Carol Trader.
I can't compete with what he said, because he said what I was going to say, and they covered more than I was going to say. But the biggest concern I have, I figured that could hear me her back here.
Your voice carries very well.
Yeah, 20, 24 years.
Sorry, the official record is a recording, so it's important that we do speak into the microphones.
Okay. Master Sergeant Carol Trader, United States Marine Corps. I live at 425 Pembroke Lane. I bought an old, repossessed house emptied for four years, so I didn't build new. But my concern is water. This is 10, 20 houses, which is nothing. Your presentation has 360 houses going in this neighborhood, plus another 100 or so going out the golf course. And you say we can support up to 16,000 people?
13,000.
13,000? Well, we just moved from, because we didn't like the state and their rules. We have five of the largest dams in the state around my house. But we couldn't get any of that water. It all went to LA. Who's going to build the biggest city in the world where there's no water? That's what you're doing here. Before I would add more houses, I would put in a water system. Before I would give approval to 10, I'd find an area where we subtract 10. I would give a cutoff to where we don't go past the number of houses projected to build. I might even make the cutoff shorter, so we never cut our nose off the spider face. Because if you get hit with a drought again, and you got more people than we can support, you don't get to flush your toilet about once every five times. It's not nice. And I see that happening here if the city grows. And I moved here because of the name Park. I like the park setting. So anything less than an acre, I think, is, for one house, is too small. We should keep it at 10. But my concern is the water. And I thank you.
You're welcome. Mike is it Steiner or Stinner?
Mike Stinner. I live at 1140 Michael Lane. I'm kind of the corner lot to this property. My real concern is utilities and drainage in the area. Photographs of the site were great, but they kind of neglected about a 75 foot drainage that runs along the east border of that property. There's been a 30 inch culvert put in, which currently is failing because of erosion upstream and erosion at the culvert head. The city is ill-equipped right now to maintain its assets. It's no great secret. Money's tight. My question is, Mr. Randolph has 10 acres permitted. Why the switch to 20, other than it benefits Mr. Randolph? It's not benefiting the citizens.
You mean homes, not acres?
Pardon me?
You mean homes, not acres.
Homes, I'm sorry. It's of no benefit to the citizens. It's a greater burden on the taxpayers. We're looking at this, the aerial views of that site. We hear a lot of great talk about the mound of Aspens. Didn't talk a lot about that wetlands that was destroyed up at the northwest corner, or that 75 foot swath running down along the east side. The developmental acreage is getting smaller if you really start looking at what's going on on this property. I don't believe 15,000 square foot lots. There's not enough room for 20 of them. Obviously, I object to this rezoning.
Thank you. Michael O'Shea? Did I get O'Shea out of that? Was that correct?
Right.
Okay.
I'm Michael O'Shea. I own 1300 Michael Lane, which adjoins the property. A couple of things. Didn't have a lot of information about this till I came here tonight. I got a letter in the mail. Didn't know about comment letters being done by one June or those types of things. So just a comment, the communications could be improved. those types of things, so just a comment, the communications could be improved. Number two, again, coming into this without hearing a lot, the analysis seems to be pretty limited and pretty biased to me. Cherry pick was a term somebody else used, and kind of strikes me that that seems like that's the case here. You got these planning documents and so on, and you just say, well, I'll just ignore it because it's a crystal ball type thing. Why have them? If they're not good, at least update them, or don't pretend to follow them. I mean, I'm just not following what's going on here. I feel like I got into the swamp or something. It's just, just not right. Like to piggyback on something the last guy said. Mr. Randolph, I'm sure he's a good guy, and I'm sure he's, he's doing it to make more money for himself. The way I look at it, he's taking money from my pocket. My property now is valued at, people look at that, it's one acre lots, I mean, ten, yeah, one acre lots behind me, so it's going to take and lower my property values and many of these other property values, and the purpose is to put more money in his, his pocket. I don't know who else is benefiting from this, or who else is getting hurt, but that's kind of my simple view of this thing. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Ryan, I cannot read your last name, Painted Rocks Road.
Christian. Ryan Christian, five-zero-eight-one Painted Rocks Road, which is nut at Woodland Park. I came tonight actually because I read the notice, used to live in that area, in Spruce Ridge, which is the development that Steve Randolph had done ten years ago, twelve years ago. I bought a purchased property, a lot from Steve Randolph in two thousand and five, in Spruce Ridge Development. And I'm here today, I came neutral, wanted to hear this, I love these hearings, I enjoy this kind of thing. I'm also a builder in this town, and have built here for several years, have lived here for twenty-five years, have coached at the high school, middle school, probably coached a lot of your kids. And I understand a lot of the opposition to this, I, I, I get it. At the same time, I think sometimes there's, there's emotion involved when you have a piece of property, ten acres behind a house, behind your home, that for several years you've used, and you've seen it as an open space, you've seen it as a place to, to look out at the beauty and the mountains and trees. But right now, I think that in the situation of Woodland Park, and where we're at, and where I'm at as a builder, and I'll tell you, I, I build on seventy-five-hundred square foot lots in town. I build on, I build on skipover lots, with Cottage Creek Living, that's our company, and I build small cottages that are very, very high-end finishes, very well-done, twelve-hundred square foot, fourteen-hundred square feet houses, and we now have a two thousand square foot house we build. But I just want to say that the homes I build don't lose property value on seventy-five-hundred square foot lots. They actually increase property values, and we've done it up on Dual Road, if you want to ever go see that. And so, I have no ties to Steve Randolph, I have no ties to the city, I don't work for either one of them, I don't have any contractual agreements with them. I am simply here as a twenty-five-year resident of Woodland Park, saying that these kinds of developments are important and valuable to our city. And so, I'm sure there's a lot of folks probably maybe upset with me for standing up here and saying this, but I actually affirm this project. I affirm the rezoning. And I, you know, I've been in Sally's office numerous times, and I'll be in her office numerous more times, with her and Laura. And we don't always agree. I'm a builder, right? Sometimes I'm the bad guy. But I also want to explain that I am fully one hundred percent with all of my trust and all of my commitment behind them, and behind the city's planning department. They do a fantastic job. And I've heard some of these things tonight, and I understand, I understand emotions can ring, ring high on some of these things, and you think you're going to lose property values, but I'm telling you right now, to the letter of the law, these women have done a great job, this department has done a phenomenal job, and they have upheld the law. And everything that they have talked about tonight in Sally's presentation has been exactly what I've heard for several years in sitting in her office. And she does not waver from those things, and they do not waver from those things. So I support them fully. I also want to say, the only contractual agreement I've ever had with Steve Randolph is buying that lot in Spruce Ridge. And I bought that lot in two thousand and five, not sure what size of house I was going to build, and that was back when you could build a home for, for the baby boomer generation and make a lot of money, before two thousand and eight. And that's my plan, that, that was my plan. I was going to build a thirty-five-hundred square foot house every two and a half years, and retire by now. But that didn't happen. But when I did buy that property from Steve Randolph, it was nothing but a wonderful experience. He, he did a fantastic job in developing those lots, I believe, and all the neighbors in that neighborhood, if you've never been to that neighborhood, you should drive up there and see it. I would challenge every one of us in this room to go see that neighborhood, because Steve did a phenomenal, and what Steve says, I heard him say, I spent time, three or four times rearranging the lot lines. Steve is incredibly dedicated to that kind of thing. He's one of the most detailed guys you'll ever be around, and I understood that when I talked to Steve, because Steve would come out to my lot after I bought it and talk to me about where I'm going to put my house. He didn't have to do that, he wasn't required by anyone to do that, but he did that. As a matter of fact, Steve came by the last day I finished my house and walked in my house to see it. This is the developer. So anyway, I just want to stand up here as a, as a citizen of this community, as a guy that's not going anywhere, who's been here for a long time and been a part of this community, to say, I fully support what these ladies do, what this department does, the planning department, and I would support Steve Randolph and what he's trying to accomplish. I don't think Steve's here to make a buck and leave, or leave these folks high and dry, or make their properties devalued. I believe what he's about to do is going to actually increase valuations on homes around that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, come up, name, serial number, rank, according to the sergeant. And location.
My name's Dan Friedell, and I own a lot at twelve-ten Tarmigan. And this question is pretty much for Steve. And what I'm curious about Steve is with these smaller lots, a lot of my neighbors are concerned about property values. Have you, this subdivision you're planning, Aspendale, will there, is this going to be a protected covenant community?
I'll answer.
And my next question is, you know, will there be building covenants, architectural control, homeowners association for Aspendale, things along those lines.
There comes in the next, he has rebuttal at that point, he can answer that at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lutz.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Lutz, and I live at thirteen-thirty Michael Lane. And I'd, excuse me, I'd like to address the issue of affordability. And I bring up this as a, I think this is relevant, because in Mr. Randolph's project narrative, he brings up affordability. And let me just quote here, one sentence, "By accommodating twenty residential lots within the project, within the project, the infrastructure costs will be distributed over twice as many homes, significantly contributing to housing affordability." So he has already mentioned, mentioned that, and I believe Sally, you, you mentioned affordability in your presentation. What I want to know is what constitutes affordability? And I'm not saying Mr. Randolph is going to do this, and I'm sure he won't, but you could put a one-room shack on, on here and say, well, that's affordable. Certainly it is. I'm not saying Mr. Randolph is going to do that, I don't believe so, there's not enough money in, in a one-room shack. So, in other words, and on the other hand, you know, you wouldn't say a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house is, is affordable. I mean, but it's somewhere in between a one-room shack and a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house. What is affordable? And who is it affordable to? For example, a, and I'm not disparaging a homeless person either, by no means am I trying to do that, but for a homeless person, a one-room shack is not affordable. I mean, if it's, if it's, even if it's a one-thousand-dollar, you know, one-room shack, a homeless person couldn't afford that. In other words, what I'm, what we're dealing here is very nebulous, you know, we don't even know, we have no definitions of these things. And, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, what, what does Mr. Randolph or anyone else means by affordable? What is affordable?
I'm going to get that answered here, Bruce.
What's that?
We'll never be able to answer that here. We'll get, we'll get sixty different opinions.
Well, exactly, exactly, John. We're going to get sixty, sixty different opinions. And, but, in other words, what's the price of a house that's affordable? I mean, are we talking about fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, two hundred thousand? What is affordable? If you can't answer those kinds of questions, at least, you know, you're going to get fifty different opinions, I, I agree with you. But we have to come to some sort of reasonable definition of affordable. We don't, then we're dealing with, we don't know what we're dealing with. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're spoken like a true college professor.
What's that?
You're spoken like a true college professor.
You betcha, John. Okay.
Okay. We've been here for two hours and five minutes. We're going to take a break until nine-ten, which is about seven minutes from now, so I'll be trying to round you all up in about seven minutes. Restrooms are through there, and the next item that will come up will be rebuttal from the applicant, and then commissioners will ask any final questions, and then we'll go into deliberation, so you know what we're going, where we're going. Have a rebuttal from the applicant if he'd like to say anything. Don't have to, but if you can, if you want to.
So we wait for the, we wait for return. Can you do it now?
He's coming back there.
He's back.
We're good.
Thank you once again, Steve Randolph, 1211, Mountain Meadows. So I will address the points that, that I can here. And if you'll pardon me, I'll try to pick a couple of them. One of them is the traffic situation at the intersection. And as you may recall, John, I was sitting in your chair when that PUD came through for approval. And so I recall quite a bit about the traffic study. And the mitigation for that is the intersection with dual left-turn lanes and the acceleration lanes and a traffic signal that will come in when it's warranted by the number of people living in the area. And it's not going to be kicked, it's probably not going to be triggered by 10 more. It'll be triggered by hundreds more, maybe. So that's kind of the, the quick answer on the traffic clog at the intersection, which was stated as it's clogged up at the stop sign. The stop sign will be replaced by a traffic signal with left-turn arrows, et cetera. So, um, let's see. Another easy one is, yes, there are covenants, there will be covenants. And if Ryan's still here, Christian, he can give you some anecdotal information about the type of covenants he had to live with to, to build the house he wanted to build. And apparently, as I said the other night at the neighborhood meeting, that part of the community seems to be okay with the nature, character of that neighborhood. There will not be an HOA. I don't know if that's good news or bad news to everybody, but HOAs can become very problematic. And it's just something I've chosen not to do. Covenants, fine, architectural standards, architectural controls, absolutely. HOA, not so much. Um, let's see. There was a concern that there was no public input in the staff report. And I would suggest that this is the public input. And this is how the process always works. So it wouldn't be expected or anticipated to be part of a staff report, other than including it, which was done. You guys got the letters right with the, okay. Um, let's see. I do like the affordability question. Conversation, discussion. Sally and I have had that discussion for years. We used to go to these affordable housing meetings in Denver and wherever around the state. And you got it, you nailed it, John. You'll get all these different opinions. And one of the former mayors used to say from right here, everything's affordable to somebody. So again, it's, it's how do you carve that out? And my attempt in this case, and in Woodland Park in general, is you look at what will the market bear for the size of lot, the terrain, the view, surrounding neighborhoods, and you price it accordingly to what the market will bear. If you overprice it, as we can see around town, they don't sell. We've got hundreds of lots overpriced, and they go nowhere. Banks repossess them. They have a lot of them on the market right now because they're overpriced. So to me, I have no interest in doing that, just to try to make some kind of killing on a big profit, because if you don't sell the property, you don't make anything. So that's my take on affordability as well. My prospective customers are going to be looking at you all's houses and saying, you know, those are great. How, how do you think you can get 20% more for your lot? I won't. It has to be competitive with the surrounding neighborhood. You, you can then decide for yourself what your house is worth and what you think somebody might pay for it tomorrow or next year. So that's what I'll be looking at, is what will the market bear? there, there's a concern that the staff is being disingenuous. I understand, that's fine. The comment was made, I'm not aware of what's gone on before. Well, you can look around and see the outcome. If you like Woodland Park, especially that area and that neighborhood, this is the staff. And these are the standards and regulations that we worked with today that created that. So if you like that, chances are you'll see more of that continue. And so I see no reason to change that. I think it's great. That's all I have, unless you guys have more questions for me.
Don't hear anybody. No, you, that'll be next.
Are we done?
We're done.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may address, if I may address just a couple of comments. So to clarify, first of all, the notice procedure that Mr. Wood referred to, it is required by law for us to notice folks within 150 feet of the subdivision. If we were to go beyond that, the applicant could come back and say, you tried to encourage people who were not, were outside your notice requirements to be involved. We have to follow the law in order to preserve the integrity of the due process. It is not about customer service. We try to have the very best customer service we can. It's very important. The applicant has private property rights that the land use process for zoning change in particular has to be followed to the T and to ensure that that integrity is maintained. And, you know, so the letters go out with, and with my phone number on it, I had three people contact me directly. So, and, and one of the questions was from Larry in terms of when should we have our letters to be? And so I said, in order for them to be in the packet, they must be in by June 1st. But of course, comments can be provided as this case goes through the process. That was simply to provide Larry's coordination with the neighborhood to say, if you want your letter in the packet, that's the deadline. But there are no real solid deadlines. You can submit your input at any time. So I wanted to clarify the notification and how we must follow our legal constraints for that. There was a mention of spot zoning. This is not spot zoning. This is residential to residential. If a commercial zone were requested for this property, then yes, that would be a very different zone and not a transition from residential to commercial. Spot zoning is when you have a totally different zone that is just plopped in the middle of a totally different type of use. This is still residential to residential. So it is not spot zoning. And then I wanted to address the water system. We have a very robust water system in Woodland Park. And the utilities director did say in his memo that we do have the water supply at this time to be able to serve an additional 10 units. And the city is very conscientious of trying to protect the water system and grow it. In fact, our next big project for water is going to be to try to build a reservoir that has 250 acre-feet in it. And that will help us not necessarily grow in population, but it will protect us during a drought so that we have that water supply available and not have the situation that we were in during the drought when the Hayman fire, the 2002 fire. So we do watch it very carefully. We have a great water system, and these 10 units are not going to break the bank. That's it.
Okay. At this point, you folks can ask any questions of anybody before we talk about it to each other. So if you have any questions for anybody in the audience, staff, applicant, now's time.
I have one, and it's just a clarification around the density thing again. And pardon me if I'm repetitive.
That's okay.
I'll let whoever wants to grab it, grab it. It might primarily be for Sally, but my question came out of one of the public comments, an assertion that was made, that I want to make sure I got it right and it's accurate. So an assertion was made that the surrounding area is still zoned suburban residential, and the PUD uses suburban residential standards. Is that correct?
I would not say that the PUD uses suburban residential standards. It has a growth.
Why I was asking the question is, I, when I, in the, in, over the years, I've lived in Woodland Park, which has only been four. But again, as I said earlier, I looked in Stone Ridge for a possible lot a bunch of years ago. It, if that was using suburban residential standards, I don't know how you could have the relative density of lots on an acre that it has compared to what the suburban residential requires. So I'm just, I was confused by that assertion. And I wanted to make sure that I understood whether it was first stated and secondly, whether it was accurate.
Yes, not accurate.
Okay.
One of the things that they can do, Peter, is that on the different releases of sections of that, how many plots do they have now compared to the 360?
Stone Ridge, 71 lots.
We've got 71 lots. Okay. The next group could come back and have 2.19 lots per acre.
Okay.
They have the, they have the difference between, the difference between a PUD and a straight subdivision is they have to turn all their plans in totally for the expansion. At this point, they're not required to do that. There's the difference between PUD, planned unit development, and that. You're standing up there for some reason.
I wanted to try to answer Commissioner Scanlon's question, because I was the one that said that information. That the area within Stone Ridge is zoned PUD. And I said they use the suburban residential standards for their development and how, and how that was developed. Primary concern or my, why I said that is because all the houses surrounding that property have a minimum lot size of at least 15,000.
15,000, that's what you meant, okay.
I didn't look at the height, I didn't look at the setbacks, but the minimum lot size.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I could also address Mr. Scanlon's concern?
Sure. From the beginning, when I got first involved in the planning commission, that whole thing of 7,500 square feet minimum lot size, combined with two dwelling units per acre, drove people nuts and still does, because you're thinking, well, then that's way more than two dwelling units per acre. So you, you have to really work with these people right here to understand, well, what's that about and why do we do it this way? And it doesn't make any sense on the surface. By the way, it still doesn't. To me, I think it's a flawed regulation, but we have to work with it because that's what the code requires. So then it's up to the developer to decide, well, how can I maximize my profit? It's not with 7,500 square foot lots. It's giving away a lot of dirt that you don't have to. So there's no compelling reason, economic reason, unless you just are a very benevolent person and you want to provide a lot of view corridors for people and you don't need the money and you're happy to spend it that way. There's also been some, I think, discussion maybe indicating that there's, there's a lack of information about how many 15,000 square foot lots can fit into a 10-acre parcel. And so for, I don't quite understand it, but the supposition is that you just can't do it. There's just not enough land and dirt. So if you just do some real quick, simple calculations, that 15,000 square feet times 20 lots, that's 300,000 square feet. And Larry can do this in his head. He's good at it.
Six and two, five, six and two thirds of a acre.
Yeah. So if you take 300,000 square feet of actual lot, planted lot, subtract that from 435,600 square feet per acre, you're left with 135,600 square feet for right-of-way. So my worst-case calculation on this is 91,300 square feet for right-of-way. Let's bump that up to 100,000 because I'll miss something. So even if we go to 100,000, then that still leaves me 35,600 feet of surplus dirt that I don't have to use for right-of-way. Something will come up. Somebody will, you know, some, some city staff person will say, well, you know, we can make you do this, which happened at Spruce Ridge. We can make you put that water line in to connect to that Stewart Place subdivision that's going in next door. So I did. You know, there's, those kinds of things happen along the way. They're unanticipated, unbudgeted, by the way, because some of it gets expensive. So you just have to be prepared to deal with that uncertainty as you go forward with this kind of a project. Did that help? Thank you.
You know you have to come up here if you're going to talk to, even though we've kind of finished this, we're just kind of not being real strict right now.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to show this, just, these lots are not connecting to the subject proposal property, but if you look at that U-shaped on Tarmigan, there are over 20 lots that are 10,500 square feet within Stone Ridge. So they're not all 15,000 square feet. Just, I just want to make that.
Amazing how the math flows as we get going. Thank you, mathematician. Okay, we're at the point where they're going to ask you questions. Remember, that's where we're at, come along here. Otherwise, we're going to have to all get pillows and we'll have to get comfortable like this. Okay, anybody else have questions for whoever you want to direct?
I've got a question for staff. I know that joining Stone Ridge as a PUD, and we went through the process of looking at, I guess they presented how it was going to be laid out before it was approved as a PUD. And it wasn't just a zoning change to give them blanket right to increase density or whatever they wanted to. Would, how much more incumbent is the PUD process than making a zone change?
It's quite significant in that you do have to do all the preliminary planning for that parcel of land. And so it's quite an investment to get traffic studies, drainage studies, the layout of lots. And it begins with a preliminary plan before the planning commission, and then this big investment by the developer to do all the preliminary pla, planning, basically, with no guarantee that it's going to be approved. So it's, it's quite a process and quite an investment. And typically, you don't see it on 10-acre And typically, you don't see it on ten-acre lots or parcels. Typically, it's on much larger, uh, parcels that have a mixed use or a big commercial component like the Walmart PUD or the Caris Bible College PUD. So it's, PUDs are not typically applied to a ten-acre tract.
So, there's a lot of questions, 'cause we don't know what's gonna happen in detail on the property. And so when you're saying it's not applicable to a ten-acre PUD, we have to go on, I guess our best judgment and facts that it presented and not, not request any preliminary layout or design. There's no method to approach that.
There is not. So you make your decision based on the traditional zoning standards and the limitations provided to, in the urban residential standards.
Um, and another question, do you have a feel for how much acreage percentage-wise is dedicated to, uh, infrastructure, roadways versus usable land?
Typical, about fifteen percent goes toward your roads.
All right, thank you.
Uh, anybody else? Questions for anybody? Mr. Lutz, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did.
But this cannot be about affordable housing.
Yes, affordable housing. Uh, let's get back to it. I wanna rebuttal to Mr. Randolph. Uh, Mr. Randolph was talking about, uh, the higher end of things, but I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, since we have no definition of affordability, uh, that there could be, um, and again, I'm not disparaging anyone or any economic, uh, you know, position there, uh, but what I'm concerned about is the lower end, the lower end. So as someone just, uh, recently said, um, you know, if, uh, you know, we get people in there that are less desirable because, and they, because they can afford, you know, they can afford this lower affordability, uh, as someone said, oh, I like your cellphone, goodbye, you know, and that's it. So that's what I'm talking about. Again, I'm not disparaging any economic class here, but that is, that is the fact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We closed the public comment, but okay, here's the last one.
Michael Che, just have a que, I'm not sure who to address it to, maybe it's Sally, but, um, just looking at my property on Michael Lane, this proposal to go from, you know, ten units to twenty units, on average, is it gonna increase my value of my property or decrease?
Property values are dependent upon a variety of issues, so...
Correct, all other things being equal, all those other issues same.
You know, it's, it's kind of a loaded question. It's a difficult question.
But it's important to me, and it's, I mean, I...
We, we anticipate that this development will at least meet or exceed the price range that your house or Stone Ridge has at the current time.
But I guess I'm asking a slightly different, a development in terms of the way it's zoned now versus a development in terms of the proposed zoning.
I, I don't know that that will have a big impact on values. They'll still be a high-quality home.
Thank you.
Market rates, whatever the market.
I can't get it.
Does anybody else know, I'm, I'm not sure who to ask.
Ask Mr. Randolph.
Yeah, Mr. Randolph.
Our house is gonna be comparable or better?
To Northwoods or Stone Ridge?
I'll go back, but it's my turn. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is...
We're about done doing this. Okay. You're gonna come up again?
Yes.
Okay, last time. Last time for the audience, last time. Huh? Did you wanna come up and talk?
Well, I wanna, I wanna address that question because it was directed to me.
Okay. Oh, that's fine.
If that's your pleasure.
We're just, this is it, okay.
Ellen, it was you that made that suggestion, right?
I did.
Um, let's see, so homes are worth what people are willing to pay for them at the time you wanna sell it. So to be able to sit here and utilize Sally's somewhat foggy and cracked and warped and out-of-focus crystal ball to predict it is, um, it, it's just, it would be a disservice to try to throw out numbers that are meaningless. So in terms of relative value, we could say, I would expect, based on the covenants and the type, the caliber of contractors that would be building those houses, they should easily equal or likely exceed the values of the existing homes. That would be the, the plan, and I see no reason that that outcome wouldn't occur, provided the housing market stays robust. It's robust right now. So I'm suspecting that some homes, when they're appraised as a set of construction drawings, by the time the house is built and sold and occupied, it'll be worth more than it was appraised at as a set of construction drawings, just because of the rapid increase in value in housing. Check your property, notice notifications of value. Uh, it's just what's happening. Rising tide floats all boats. And when the tide runs out, we're high and dry, as we've seen for the last seven years or so. And I think that's been, um, catastrophic to these larger subdivisions that I mentioned earlier that had counted on, I mean, the Upper Paradise project was, oh, those are all gonna be million-dollar homes or plus. All three of them that are there now over, how many lots, Sally, are up there?
I'm sorry.
Upper Paradise, couple hundred lots? Yeah, so the developer stood right here and said to me, sitting right there, those easily sell for over a million dollars apiece. And I see about three of them up there, fifteen years later, maybe, something like that. So, and I'm not disparaging that particular developer because he's one of the most experienced we have. And him and a couple, three others just kind of missed the boat on overpricing stuff. Good enough?
Good enough.
Does that help?
Yep.
No, I didn't answer my question, but I guess...
So you want a precise number?
No, I just wanted, is it, if you build, wait, zone now, you build ten houses on that property, my property, this property already priced, you propose to change to twenty, is it gonna increase my value or decrease?
Well, if I, if I take Mr., if I take Mr. Lutz's example, if I build ten thousand-square-foot shanties, guess what's gonna happen to your property value? If I build twenty, six-hundred-thousand square...
But you're not, you're not, only economic interest, you're gonna build dead, very nice houses. You're gonna build twenty probably a little bit lesser quality houses. I mean, go listen, but you're not gonna build as big a house on, on the smaller lots as you would if you built a, uh, your own, if you set yourself, you're not gonna build those shanties, you're gonna feel appropriate to the situation.
Are the houses gonna be comparable to the houses that you're gonna build around?
I think we've covered that about five or six times in the last, between the meeting and tonight.
If you build it today, you don't change the rules, you're gonna build it out, you're gonna build probably a really nice six-hundred-thousand-dollar house. If you change it to twenty, you're gonna build very nice four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses.
So let me, let me try to help with that a little bit. If I, if I size it for six-hundred-thousand-dollar houses and people who can afford six-hundred-thousand-dollar houses come and look around, they decide, I'm gonna put my six-hundred-thousand-dollar house in a neighborhood that consists of other six-hundred-thousand-dollar houses.
Right.
So to be able to predict at this point what's gonna happen to your particular personal property value without ever having even seen it, it could go up.
Okay, let's cut this off, only because we'll be here a long time. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for anybody? Okay, at this point in time, we're gonna move on to item nine, which is deliberation, and we'll have to do each other. Who wants to start?
Pick one.
Then I'll start. This, what's gonna happen here, like I told you, this is, this is a straight, a straight subdivision, nothing's gonna be decided, all those questions about the property values, all the questions of what kind of house will be, will be looked at, at the, at the first preliminary plat, which are all welcome, I hope you all come back to do it. And then you're, they're gonna have recommendations, some things that maybe the developer missed, builder missed, but we're gonna say, we'll do that with this amendment. Okay, and then we're gonna, either gonna come back again at the, at the final plat, and we're gonna go over the same thing. All we can do is pass it on the council at that point, and the council's gonna go over those same two things again. You've got a lot of, a lot, a lot of shots, you can take it to start, okay? And it's gonna take a while, but at this point, it's an unknown, and we all have to live with that. It's just the way it is. Density, Highway twenty, Highway sixty-seven, it's eventually gonna be four-lane. It's already in the plans with CDOT. That ugly thing, it's all broken-up asphalt on a, what is it, west side of the road, that's gonna be gone. Okay, we're gonna have more stoplights up and down there and slow that traffic down. Half the time on Valley View, you can't get out. Okay, so all those things are gonna be addressed. And an average house generates ten trips a day. Okay, ten trips a day. So there's, there's always gonna be ten, so it's gonna add one-hundred trips a day. In a twenty-hour period, that's five an hour. That's five an hour. That's not going to jam up Highway sixty-seven, five cars an hour. It's not. It's not gonna make that much of a difference. And I think by the time this all happens, which you're gonna see, is twenty, is sixty-seven being redone when our state figures out how they're gonna pay for it. And that's what's gonna happen. And there will be street, there will be stoplights out there too as well. And that will slow everything down and put gaps in between the cars. So that, that, that's what's gonna happen in the future. I'll probably be pushing up daisies by the time that happens, but anyhow, that's what's gonna happen, all right? So if we're not gonna deliberate, then we're gonna vote. Is anybody prepared to make a motion, second? If we're not, we'll take another break. I don't really care. No, I...
Okay, I move. Where's the, uh, move that we approve?
So we got it.
Very good. Approve case, uh, number Z O N seventeen zero zero one, the Asmandale rezone, uh, approved as, uh, as written.
Do I hear a second?
I second, since we're gonna have to vote on it anyway.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do you call the question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'll start with Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Ellen Karak.
Yes.
Ken Hardsville.
Yes.
Vicki Good.
No.
Jerry Penler.
No.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
No.
And John Devoe.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes five-three, so the recommendation will go forward to the city council for their consideration, um, on July twentieth. Thank you so much for everybody here.
And please go to that, too. If there's gonna be a public hearing, you can do that as well, and we'll all see you back here if it gets past that. And thank you for coming. Thanks for getting involved. Thank you. We got reports.
Wait a minute. Did I take this?
I don't know.
Say, we're not down, we're still here.
You would say that's good.
We don't have a workshop.
Hey, John, we're gonna have a workshop tonight?
If we have cookies.
Yeah, we're all gonna meet at Denny's and I'll buy.
Did you bring the key to unlock the lock?
Oh, no, just break the windows.
Chairman's report, I have none. Commissioner's reports, anything you wanna talk about for the good of the order?
It would probably be right, excuse us, we're continuing.
Gentlemen, we're still in the meeting?
Yes.
We've only got one more item.
Just a, just a couple minutes.
Tone it down a little bit. Okay, Sally.
Okay, just a couple of things. You have the monthly report on your desk, and it does highlight the micro-tell, uh, PUD amendment, site plan review, and final plat. You will be hearing that on June twenty-second, so please remember that's a quasi-judicial case, uh, and we will see you on June twenty-second. Last thing I have is that I did attend a meeting at the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments this afternoon. It was on scenario planning for the twenty forty-five transportation plan, uh, and it was an interesting scenario planning. We, we did planning for what would it look like for demographics, regulations, technology, and those sorts of things, if there were an infill project, a new center-type development or a dispersed development. So, um, but the reason I bring it up really is to let you know that we, the city is, um, has a vacancy on the Citizens Advisory Committee to PPA CG, and so we're looking for somebody to fill that role. If anybody in the planning commission or in the community that would like to, um, be a CAC member to the regional planning, uh, system, we would certainly love to have you submit your application.
What's the requirements and the commitment for meetings?
It's, they're, they have typically a monthly meeting, it is a daytime meeting, um, I can't tell you which day of the month that is, but it's one meeting a month.
Anything else?
That's it.
Do I hear a motion, new juror?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Discussion, please. We're done, we're there. Discuss it now, we're gone.